So we'll go ahead and start with the work session, Dr. Beatty.
All right, trustees.
Turn it over to you.
Okay. I'm stuck here. Excuse me. Thank you, trustees. Glad to be here at the Maplewood's campus, as they say, in the woods, I think. Nice, beautiful campus, and we're glad to get about the district. I'm gonna say my birthday wishes and my birthday song, because those two aren't here. Our board calendar, we've got a very busy October. Please make sure you mark your calendars to attend our ribbon cutting at the Engineering Technology Center at the Penn Valley Campus. Of course, we have the trustee leadership conference, the 13th through 16th. On the 19th, we have in-service, which will be a hybrid event, and then the board meeting on the 21st. In November, the notable events will be the MCCA annual convention, which is in Branson. We are pleased and privileged to have our lobbyists with us today to provide a legislative update from our last session, and I would invite Ms. Giddens to come forward and provide that update.
Hello, hello. It's time for our annual conversation. I'm happy to hear you're missing your last show of the COVID. It was different, so this is my annual day with you all. I'm happy to be here. Normally, I tell myself, okay, this week, but tonight I want to introduce my team, she and her, and this data is back, and they have some sportsmen around the halls with me and watching me get angry and frustrated. But I actually have good news. I have three parts. I have good news, I have awkward news, and then I have the other. And the good news is, for how many years with the state budget, I come up here and said, okay, well, we got that. Now, the good news is, it could have been worse. I actually have good news. Community colleges were funded $155 million dollars. Of the $155 million dollars, we looted the $10 million equity fund. And the reason why, if you look at the number of community college, if you look at the number of students community colleges educate, and consider that in relation to how much we're funded, there's a real disparity between us and our corporate counterparts. Dr. Beatty, Dr. Rado, they spent significant time talking to our legislators about why we need an equity funding. This year was the first step in that. We'd like more. We're going to continue to push for more, but we were able to attain $10 million to go into our court. Very excited about that. A+ was fully funded at $60 million. So everyone will remember this later on. Current tool credit program was funded at $5 million. Our training programs were funded around $35 million for new jobs, free training, customer training. Mo's staffs, very excited. I know you probably heard a lot about this. Our advanced education commitments to Dr. Beatty worked a lot and worked with our department to get priority on the list. We were selected. This year, we were awarded three, our first $3 million appropriation of three. We're on schedule to be, to receive $3 million next year, then $3 million the following. So all that looks great. And then shocking all of us after this, the legislature came to us and said, we're gonna run the per capita bill. And we didn't know that we could go, but we got to try, right? Sure enough, it did. And then after per capita bill, we got, we got an $18 million one out of per community college, just of which MCC will receive 1.5 million. They split that straight up between all of us. So that is, for the first time in years, a good appropriations report. I'm still happy to give it to you. So that's the good part. The awkward part, Second Amendment Preservation Act. You've probably heard about it from the TV. You've probably read about it. Essentially, it's a Missouri law that says it invalidates certain federal firearms laws that branch upon your second amendment warrants. And so why do we care? Because any law enforcement agent that tries to enforce federal law, there are penalty provisions in there. They're saying they can't do it. As you expect, the federal government, some of the states saying, don't use them for this. This isn't, let's not do this. And now we're eliminated. So that's obviously up in the air currently, but I think if we know how, who, who you serve soon, we can probably predict how that's gonna go in a, in a fourth step. So that's the awkward. Then the other. We have a couple fronts that we had to fight and defend against, and in part, that's why we've been honoring senators tonight. The first of which was a Biden-Buchanan county and which service area they were gonna go on to. You all have dealt with that. I'm not gonna waste time on it. I really wanna give this group thanks for, for working so hard and working behind the scenes so that way we didn't have to fight that on the court instead we got a good counter. So major kudos to everyone in this room and our electives for handling that, not on the center plate. Now, the fight we did have on the center court for full display, and it was, it was true trench warfare, was a bill related to our attacks. Year, a few years ago, the legislature got language dealing with how, obviously, people attach to services. And what we did is picked this statute language up, ranked it for our campaigns, and that got a lot of attention, particularly from Senator Rick Brown. He didn't like it. He didn't like the language. He had learned about language even as a House member, doesn't like it today, and certainly had some major pushback with him. As part of that, multiple variations via amendments, it wasn't an actual bill that was filed, but we have been multiple variations, all of which were not good for us, certainly adversary for us. And it was truly because of our team games. They got on that floor, they watched it so ardently. They got on that floor and they fought, and they fought for who, they fought for our students, they fought for our attachment, they fought for industry suspicion. And I cannot say I'm not, both were so ugly and so rough. Sometimes it's a great thing that happens when you see really how hard the teams are really fighting. And so very much, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to, you know, commend them for their effort and their, their support of everyone in this room and our students. So that's, that's certainly the ugly part. We were able to, when I say we, Senator Art particularly, and Senator Brad were able to come to some reform language that did pass. Is this fight over? We don't know. Are we gonna see it again next year? Possibly. But the point is, our crew was there to be in them. And I want to thank everyone, particularly with operating, they spent a lot of political equity on that. And so thank you very much, and I will answer any questions anybody may have, if you have.
Nancy, do you think next year appropriations, and how do you think, obviously, these were a lot of one-time, assuming they use COVID dollars for a lot of that? Do you think this next year will be similar, or what, what, what do you see?
Conversations that I've had thus far, looking at the 23 fiscal year, they predict it's gonna look pretty good. We have more fellow clients coming in. So from that perspective, you know, as you would know, as former legislator, that frees up how you spend money when we're like passed. And so we've been told that there may be another good year on the horizon for us. Now, as you all know, depending on what happens, that can change pretty fast. So it is my greatest hope that we have another good year and we have more. We obviously secure our moats and setting and just keep going from there. But again, depends on, depends on a lot of things, including personality and anti-stoicism here. So how's that play out? We'll all find out together.
I'll add to what Ms. Giddens said, to say internally, there's a lot of conversations about our internal equity funding model. Dr. Burchell is certainly on that task force. As a reminder, we've got, the, the funding comes to the Department of Higher Ed, and then, even though we educate 46% of Missourians, we get 15% of that higher education budget. And then based upon an agreed upon equity formula, that's how the money is divided up. The equity formula is in place because some colleges, due to historical funding models that we have nothing to do with, are funded below a, there's a big gap in terms of the first student funding. So anyway, we're working on that. Dr. Burchell, remind me, we're trying to settle on a 90-10.
But new, new equity money moment.
So that's where this becomes important, because whenever there is any new money, how that is divided. So 90-10 means, on any new money, that those colleges that are below the funding, which they're, where they, there's a, pretty much a lot. St. Louis, MCC, I think it's East Central, and then one other college that are, where the funding is higher. So we would split 10% of any new money, and the rest, the 90%, we get split below with the other colleges to try to start to bring the funding per student up. So, but we haven't settled on that yet, but we are working with that.
And if I may follow up on that, from a public perspective, the community colleges did a lot of athletes for handling that internally and not bringing the fight to the halls. And for the first year, this, during the Senate debate committee, I heard some senators talk about why we do it our way and why the four years aren't doing it. And instead happened to apply items and ended up in a fight from the American. And I thought it was a fascinating conversation for maybe even start connecting if they can manage to apply to the four years.
Nancy, anything else this next year that gives you pause?
It's certainly, it's certainly an election here, and I would have had one response prior to last week. veto session was last week, and normally it's, you don't expect any real conversations, and then the legislature should have been in and out quite quickly. If you listen to all to the Senate board, which no one hears, who did, because our job in the courts like that, it was a fight over nothing. And it was a fight, and it was Republicans fighting Republicans, your conservative caucus fighting your leadership, your conservative caucus fighting your executive branch. And so now, with that knowledge, I would say it's a great year for defense. I think it's a great year for budget, because they have to pass it. And I think it's a really bad year for anything else offensively. Because I just, if you can't get in and out of the veto session, how do you do policy matters through an election year, which typically are formal partisan, just by nature? So I think it's gonna be a rough year. I think it's gonna spend a lot of time and probably produce, not a term, is my estimation.
I was hoping, since you have your guest here tonight, Representative Cooper. I was hoping Representative Cooper could maybe impart some wise wisdom before he departs this evening. Mr. Cooper.
I would, I would be happy.
I just wanna gather him down. I just wanna gather him down.
It's your turn.
Defense.
I would say, on behalf of Giddens group, Nancy does 99% of the work. So I get called in in situations like what we dealt with at the end of session, and I probably, as a, twelve years I've worked with her, never seen so mad over a particular issue. She did, she did a great job, obviously. The senators, the mayor honored tonight, stood up and defended this organization. That's not only because of the organization, your relationship, but because of Nancy's personal relationship. It was quite shocking to be in vigil that we were being battled with, and I would like to say they learned their lesson, but my wisdom tells me it probably only made a matter. So probably for the next seven years, we will be on high alert for certain vigilions anytime they stand up.
And that percentage will change from 99% to 1%.
Yes.
Lot more help.
Yeah, we have.
Good, it was good to see you.
Nancy, I would like to personally thank you. He, he brought to the, a really good point up. There were a lot of people scurrying around and, single-handedly, behind the scenes, she worked those relationships, and it was defeated. So, thank you. So for our student success report, we are moving toward becoming an equity-centered institution, and we're gonna take a focus on equity. And so I'm gonna invite Dr. Haynes, who is our Vice President of Diversity Equity Inclusion. Previously, he was Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs at the Blue River Business and Technology Campuses. And he has joined us at the district to, given his background, lead this effort for the college. So we'll glad to have him, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, trustees, Ted, and all the other members of the board, this opportunity to talk about what we're doing in our diversity, equity, and inclusion space. So I wanted to give you a snapshot of our journey. So in 2017, we had a strategic plan, which developed some strategic things surrounding diversity, equity, inclusion. Because of that, the Office of Institution Equity and Inclusion were on board with compliance focused. Thereafter, we hired a Senior Director of Institution Equity Inclusion, and that was in 2019. Thereafter, a series of assessments surrounding equity replaced climate study being one, and that was administered. The path forward. So right now, we are into phase one of this equity incentive framework. If you see at the top, it says career sense of urgency. So our goal is to go through this whole cycle here, starting with this phase one, entering phase two framework, and we'll go to the next slide and tell you about what that looks like right now. So I mentioned earlier that we had a series of data analysis and assessments, climate study being one. We've had some diversity sure that are gonna be going on in this upcoming source event. So each campus will have both hybrid, face-to-face, and a blending of workshops and sessions to kind of talk about what this diversity equity and inclusion piece means for metropolitan community college. Each campus has also adopted a series of themes. So for example, Penn Valley is microaggressions. We have some other campuses that have some themes as well, of Blue River, and business technology culturally relevant practices. Maplewood's unconscious bias, the online program advancing inclusive online bias, loaning, microaggressions. At the administrative center, we're gonna be focused on supply diversity. Moving forward, this summer, we had Faculty Equity Institute. We received a grant from the Missouri Scholarship, the Loan Foundation, which allowed us to take about 25 faculty members through each training this summer that kind of talked about how we infuse equity and diversity, inclusion into the classroom pedagogical functions. We also had a Garner Institute, where we have an equity retention academy team, kind of focusing on district-wide, how those spaces of diversity, equity, inclusion will come about. So as we move forward with this phase, we're in a stage where we're identifying the champions. So you see up here, we have affinity group mobilization, supply of diversity. I've had some conversation with members of the foundation and how we can get our alumni more engaged with this DEI work. We have some district councils that we're working on, some campus inclusion councils, we're working on our strategic alliances, and we're developing a series of community partnerships. So we want to establish a common vision as we move through the fall and spring semester. So where do we want to be? We will conduct a series of visioning exercises in the spring. And here is our timeline. So over the summer, we identified themes, district council members engaged in supply diversity, affinity groups, completed Faculty Institute, completed the Garner Institute, and explored external partnerships. This fall, we'll be conducting some surex, examining the financial and climate study. We'll be promoting DEI. We have a proposal accepted to our Missourian Higher Education Equity Summit, so we'll be presenting there along with talking about some of this work that I am serving. Then we're working with different arms of the college, HR, for example, to look at that pressure development training piece, what that looks like in terms of an institution-wide district focus. And then in the spring, we have division. We're gonna be conducting those exercises that I mentioned earlier in our presentation, talking about how we might enhance our staff and determine their need for expansion of affinity groups.
Any questions?
I'll take some questions if you have any.
So at this point, it's focused primarily on staff and employees. Is that, is that right?
We're working with staff, employees, and students. So in our surex, we're then, we're gonna have a blending of our faculty, our staff, and our students, and we can figure out as a large body what this means. We don't wanna isolate one group, and we wanna make sure that our students are intimately involved in this process. So we'll be having some focus groups with them, working on other things. My hope over time is to have maybe a work study, a student, a diversity fellow in our office working with us, and work with emphasis communities and get the student voice in that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. So we've got a couple of informational items, and we'll start with our capital projects update that we provide for you every month. And Dr. Don Burchell, I'll try to leave it to you. You wanna go to the corner?
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, presidents, members of board. This evening, I'll let them update you on capital project profile. And while your attention is within the following construction, secondly, you will see that the best technology skills institute is at 73%. The Penn Valley Engineering Technology Building is now at 99.9%. Final paperwork, and what's on that, and the MCC, these campuses at 70%. Numbers represent where we are, payment to the board and our subunit bases.
So in terms of where we're going in the future, Dr. Burchell.
Yes. So what I wanna do is, is prep the board with what we plan to see come in the near future. Reminder that, you know, for these projects, some of the concepts we do already, just a real quick indication is that, as we evacuate, look at closed down, hence the C C campus, we've got the print shop, one file area that needs moved out. We'll be relocating that to Science Institute in the basement. We've got the fitness center provision that will be coming forward. The collision, along with our motor institute collision, it's looking for a good name for that program, which will be coming forward.
There's a donor out there, I'm sure, that wants to put their name.
The Penn Valley Central Plant, it's already had its second failure. So we're basically, I believe, we're all over the earth. But it's time, this is, we can't hatch it anymore. It's, it's not feasible to hatch anymore. It's time to just replace it. And so what do we see coming before you is a plan to actually replace the central plant, the Penn Valley, for the HEAC, getting back to their condition. The other thing, the other, another one that will become good is, is the science lab refresh enhancements. That will be coming in seconds, just because of availability of components, parts, and labor. And then the final one is the Ag Institute is the startup facility.
So we really just remind you, you'll see this just about every month, because pieces will be coming to you, and you wanna keep it at the forefront. This is the goal. These are the goals.
Penn Valley is HEAC?
Yes.
So are we able to use COVID dollars for that?
No, we officially, we can't. We can use COVID dollars to retain, improve, upgrade. The system just can't handle any more enhancements, upgrades. It needs to replace.
And a quick question, and this may be too far down in the weeds, however, could you talk about how we communicate, perhaps with like our vendors? Do we share this type of information with our potential vendors for these particular projects, six months in advance? That sort of thing, that this type of work is coming? Does that make any sense?
It does. What we're trying to do is try to get the information available. As we evolve our tax, we really rely on people to, you know, come get the information on the board. We really don't wanna inform anyone ahead of time until the board's fully informed. Where the vendors come into play is when we launch the RFPs, when we launch the codes of bids, et cetera, once we narrow it down. So really, do we pay, we're ahead of time, other than the fact that we have a schedule and what we can make available, what we're actually presenting for.
Don, Dr. Burchell, it might be helpful to talk, this happened, this transition happened before trustee Reed came on the board. We made a significant change in how we notify vendors for RFPs. We used to do it more on the back end, but we created a new system and enhanced it, so the net is really wide. So as an example, I'm just gonna pick something. Hopefully, I picked something.
Is that, is that, well, I guess, because what I'm, my question is the forecasting, so that they can create the relationship, right? That's what I think.
Yes. We rely heavily on Chris Kelly. Like I said, this is the information that she can literally say is, is she can take this to her clients and they say, this is what's coming down the pipe. What she then does is encourage them, we use the system for public purchase. And what we used to do is try to use newspapers and word art, et cetera. Now what we do is we tell all vendors, and basically says, if you will see our documents on public purchase, please subscribe to public purchase, and we thank you to make the effort. Tell them how to subscribe to public purchase, and we'll make an official effort. This is if we know something in particular where vendors, newspapers, will reach back up, or first will reach back up, and then say, here's this activity that you guys mentioned coming down the pipe. Now is the time to come forward and make proposals.
Chancellor.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chancellor, may I ask if, and I realized this is ball parking in a big, big way, if each of those was accomplished, how much would you think we'd be spending?
Millions of dollars.
But all of these, all of these efforts, let me see, not all of them. The sports training center, the automotive institute, the Ag Institute are all a part of the campaign as well. So those dollars, where we're more than halfway through our campaign, with your $11 million, are part of, that, that's where that funding, in part, where that funding comes from. Thank you.
So I can give you real quick, HSI about half million, sports training, fitness center, one and a half million, collision program, $1 million. Penn Valley Central Plant, we're hoping it's around one and a half. College-wide lab refreshes, anywhere from $3 to $8 million. The Ag Institute is $1 million.
You know I'm talking thousands at all, do you? Thank you.
So to complement pictures is, again, to give the board a little bit of a feeling, what do you expect to see some of this? So this is again, kind of answering that, trustee Reed's questions. And once we make this available for the board, we can now share this with vendors, et cetera, and say, here is our plan. Now, is it actually gonna happen at the time? We're hoping that's the case. But this is the expected plan, and following through on some of those projects, when important, expect to see information of each of these projects coming forward.
Thank you, Doc.
You bet.
So, talking about millions, thank you. Our ERP is a huge investment, millions and millions upon close. That dramatic, but it is quite an investment. So this is a long process that we are getting ready to enter upon, and we wanted to start providing you with information. And if you have follow-up questions, we can continue to come back, because this will be a significant investment when it does come to the board. Dr. Chuan.
I do just remember, President Scott, members of the board, the states, thank you for the opportunity. Is that to you, this information, I think, as Chancellor mentioned, it's likely to be coming to you in the next two months about our enterprise resource planning platform. Just a quick reminder of what an ERP is. An ERP is an application that interprets the core business processes of our organization. And for our case, the core business process is centered around human resources, student information systems, and finance.
So this has been a, something that's been a real sticking point for me since I arrived. Our systems don't talk to one another. And so it's actually been on Dr. Chuan's goals since I arrived. So this, I'm very pleased to see us moving in this direction, where we are now beginning to look at a system that interacts and talks to each other. Because, for example, when we get ready to fill positions, we've gotta go to HR to get the list of positions and then reconcile that like a checkbook with the budget, because the two systems don't talk to one another, which is archaic, to be frank.
You're right. What's, what, can I ask a quick question? I think we, we voted on this previously or so, and it was a vendor or something, it was the same thing, or it was something else?
I'm not sure. I'll, I'll try to think about what you're, what you're thinking of, but.
And you can't think about what I'm thinking. It's my, it's my thoughts.
She was thinking that.
Just so we're clear, this is the core system, right, which is everything. It allows us to communicate, finance to students, budgeting, all of that. It's our people's office, people's office.
That's what, that's what. Thanks. Thank you so much.
See, I said we would try and think of what you were thinking of. See, I said we would try and think of what you were thinking of, if you'd give us a chance to think of it.
That's not what you said, but.
Want me to gabble her down?
Yes, so MCC has had quite a long history here in our platforms. The current PeopleSoft platform has been the lead for the last couple of years. And money is now business transactions in three modules that are split, again, between HR, finance, and student information systems. And when we talk about student information systems, it's about student registration, student accounts, life cycle support. And, you know, HR, you know, both invited to the unit, manager of management. And HR is staffing and position management and talent management, etc. So in January this year, the chancellor said, you know, the last four years, probably four years next month, in October, October 31st. The chancellor has always said, well, in January need to do that, the ERP and ERP part. And so the chancellor is coming, just give me some funding. Now, here it is, so in January this year, the chancellor directed the formation of a task force to explore possible alternatives for our ERP solution. So the task force comprised membership from different business units across the organization. That student management, engagement, sorry, instruction, student financial, finance, payroll, and IT. We were able to look at possible solutions out there, what might suit our needs. And PeopleSoft, which is our kind of relationship with my organization, is in banner, update, and anthology. So we talked about this with vendors, you know, that, that, you know, some of these systems and our recommendation was that the knowledge is actually in need for a, let's call it, the knowledge is actually in need for the next generation ERP platform that is cloud-based. And is able to synchronize data across different transactional databases across the enterprise. And this will help us to do this task management. So at this point, I will now invite Dr. Marcus Jackson. This is made an appearance to the board. Dr. Jackson is the Associate Vice Chancellor of Information Technology.
Thank you, John. Good evening, chancellor, president Scott, and board trustees. This slide is, this slide is one of the most important slides. You might be looking, you might be thinking to yourself, I don't really want to change our ERP. But if you look at this slide, you can see the competitive advantage this stuff doesn't bring. You would also see how it aligns with the college's strategic direction. Again, as Dr. Chuan mentioned, that in the market, there are next generation ERP systems. And the time is now for us to look. But some of the, some of the reasons why we should consider an ERP is because it's going to improve our student experience. It's going to improve our academic structure. It's going to increase opportunities for operation efficiencies and process improvements. There's going to be possible savings as people solve this legacy system. It also is going to allow us to have a mobile strategy. Where organizations doesn't have a mobile strategy these days. And then to the chancellor's point, it also is going to integrate, allow us to integrate between the student system, the finance system, and the human capital management system. So that integration will be created. So, so far, this next slide here is a timeline of the progress today. And it shows the kind of steps that we have gone through. And we have presented a business case to the executive cabinet. We sent out an email communication district-wide explaining why we need to evaluate our ERP. We also developed a survey that I'll speak more to later in upcoming slides. Asking the employees for their feedback in reference to satisfaction in new features that they would like to see in the new ERP. So as I just mentioned, here's some of the survey results. These are the top three things. So the employees are basically saying, for twenty-nine percent out of the two hundred and fifty-five employees that responded to the survey, they said that they want to see features, right? They want, they want features in the new ERP system. They also want ease-of-use, and they want the system integrated, again, to the chancellor's point. If all the systems are integrated, it's going to help create that ease-of-use. Next slide. The next slide is about the satisfaction based on the three different systems that make up the ERP. You have the student system, there's a forty-six percent satisfaction rate amongst the employees related to the student management system. There's a twenty-eight percent satisfaction rate with the finance system, and a forty-three percent with the payroll and human resources system.
If you have students, if they were satisfied with the student system, what percent would that be?
Did we survey the students?
We did not survey them.
We didn't survey.
Here's, I want you to just real quick comment on the core. Since so much of it is on the mobile side of it, I think student, whether it's students from the IT program or something, should have some, some involvement in this. Because, I mean, it is, to your point, and I saw Tremaine shaking his head, I mean, it is all right here in your hand. And, and students are not, if it takes, if they have to email in an application or email something, or it's going to be completely lost. And I'll just go over where it's easier. And so I just think that has to be, I think that is super important. And no offense to anybody in this room, but the, the twenty-year-old is going to have a much better sense of what that needs to look like than me or Holmes. So, so I just would really encourage us to do that.
Why, why did you leave Ellen off?
She gets, she gets mad at me, I always pick.
So in addition to engaging with students about ERP, we're hoping to bring the recommendations to the board, possibly in two to three classes, depending on how things go. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to answer the question about what the student involvement was, so.
Ballpark price tag, number one. Number two, how easy is this thing to hack into?
So, the price point, you're looking at for the initial implementation, not ongoing cost. The initial implementation is going to be a lot more, for professional services to do the implementation. It can range anywhere from two million to eight million for the implementation. But here, here's the key. The ongoing costs, we expect that at the high end, we expect them to save a million dollars. The low end, we expect them to save a half a million. As far as the, the security, as Dr. Chuan mentioned, we're going for a cloud product. So we're going to be holding our, our vendor, wherever we choose, we're going to be holding them accountable for providing the necessary security. And as you, as you guys might be aware, a lot of organizations are moving things to cloud. And, and they're using these major vendors. So my expectation is that, that the security will be better security than what we have now.
Moving through that, I have an impression, and maybe it's false, that PeopleSoft is an unlikely participant in this new.
We, we certainly wouldn't want to assume that, trustee. We want to go through the RFP process and give everybody an equitable opportunity. And when the best meets the needs in the RFP.
Well, the one just assumes that given the history there, there's the ketchup thing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We also will be bringing next month, multi-functional devices. And Dr. Chuan is going to give us an update on that.
Thank you, chancellor, I think, the discuss, who was at the board. Next month, we will be bringing to you a pool of operating and multi-functional devices contract. Now, what is NPS, just to give you, the term of the word is, so the management printing services is a, is a contract in which a vendor goes, I mean, provides, you know, printing services to an organization. So we get to manage the processes that generate, you know, our documents across the business, across the enterprise. And this is important for one reason. Organizations that are as large as MCC and have multiple geographic locations and large organs, it is almost impossible, so to speak, for them to be able to charge and manage the printing services. So an NPS service allows a vendor to come in and give you the money to that process for an organization. So that's what an NPS is. Ninety percent of organizations, by the way, do not know who is printing what. And, you know, having this kind of complex allows us to be able to, so what is an N, why an NPS is important? First thing, it allows us to standardize printing and printing services. This is critical because it allows us to be able to provide new services across business units that are spread across multiple areas. The second purpose is, or another reason, it helps us reduce costs in device downtime. So in a printer, it breaks down the presence of these individual rooms. They don't have a variety, they can pick up a, it's a number right on top of the phone. They can pick up a phone and call the vendor, and the vendor will be there, usually within half an hour. So that's another benefit of this. The third benefit is that they can track printing, you see, across SCC. And that's important because we're able to customize printing needs based on the business needs of a particular department. For example, there's some departments that not generate a lot of documents, you know, documents. And there are others that generate a lot of printing outputs. So we get to customize those services based on the business, the needs of the business. The last slide here is about the cost implications. Last year, sorry, you know, the contract is going to cost about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And, you know, the breakdown is, as far as twenty thousand monthly payments, which is in leasing of the paper plate. And that's important because we have to, we have to, to consider the cost of buying new printers. Our printers that we have, they're four hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and nine thousand dollars a person. And the buying costs from a thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. So that is an important aspect of that contract. Then have we allocated fifty thousand dollars to allow additional ratings of our printers? And the total amount will be three hundred and two thousand over the year, and nine hundred and seven thousand over the period.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Bailey.
Glenn, we're going to work it quicker, huh?
Excuse me.
Go up the back.
I was going back so I could say, happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday, trustees Martin and Brown.
Happy birthday, Ellen.
Happy birthday, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe it's easier for me to escape out and do it. Oh, oh, I messed up, I did something wrong.
Is that all the work session, Dr. Bailey?
I believe so, trustee.
And I'm going to go ahead and gabble us into our open meeting. And welcome, everybody, here this evening. Real quick, we'll do item two point one, which is the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, here, now I'll take a motion to approve.
Moved.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coz, all right, motion passes. We'll go on to item two point one for Dr. Bailey.
For item two point four, the board, and I wanted to take a moment to thank the legislators that are still with us today. Legislature Arthur Stierfeld and Razor. We so appreciate the work that you did so much for us on the floor. Mrs. Ely, she gave a full report of the legislative report of our last session. And I know I've spent a lot of time in every single one of you in your offices. And I'm almost coming to tears for how thankful I am that you advocated to this institution. I want to personally give my heartfelt thanks. And the board is going to do so through a commendation. And I'm going to invite trustee Washington up to present on behalf of the board that commendation.
I do want to know why trustee Washington is walking up there. We do share something in common in that we share your pain and that we too have to serve with Barbara Washington. Trustee Washington, please.
Thank you. It is an honor to serve as a trustee of the Metro County Community College in and of my Kansas City area college. So we're going to do, so it is going to pleasure Senator Arthur, where I have a present, possibly, perhaps. I will not read the entire resolution, but we'll read the important parts. So we're actually under our, championing a number of policy issues, as the legislature, including early literacy programs, legislation to expand healthcare access to women at a heightened risk of breast cancer, and providing relief to small businesses and family fawns throughout this area of economic and injury. Whereas Senator Arthur stood against all that legislation that would have been harmful for MCC during the last legislative session. Whereas Senator Arthur actively protected the local voters who voted to join the community colleges district to make higher education more accessible and affordable for area students. Whereas Senator Arthur, a passionate leader for education, a thoughtful and approachable legislator in her district, and beyond, while showing a willingness to work across the aisle on substantive issues. Be it therefore resolved that the board of trustees of the junior college district of metropolitan Kansas City, hereby commends Senator Lauren Harper for her seven years of noteworthy service in Missouri State Legislature, including the senate and the house, for tireless support of our college in education and a principal leadership in the last legislative session. We had finally resolved that the commendation resolution shall be entered into our official minutes of our, of the board of trustees of the junior college of Missouri, I'm sorry, of metropolitan Kansas City, Missouri. So they shall be recorded and history shall be properly recognized, the contribution made by Senator Lauren Harper.
Thank you, trustee. But we do want to have a follow-up back after the call.
For Senator Michael Stierfeld. We recognize him for everything he's done for us. So whereas he has studied and studied legislation that would have been harmful to our college during the last session, he, as a state legislator, has championed policy issues, including incentives to our businesses and protecting jobs from the state, from other states, including worldwide and social causes. Whereas Senator Stierfeld, actively, has protected the local voters, giving way to vote to join our community high district to make higher education more accessible and affordable for their students. Whereas Senator Stierfeld is a compassionate leader of his own businesses, a thoughtful and approachable legislator in his district, and beyond, while showing a willingness to work across the aisle with substantive issues. Be it resolved, but. Being resolved that the board of trustees of the junior college district of metropolitan Kansas City, Missouri. hereby commends Senator Stierfeld for his eleven years of temporary service in Missouri's state legislature. His tireless support of M C C and education and his principal leadership in the last session. Being further resolved that this commendation resolution shall be entered into the official minutes of the board of trustees of the junior college district of metropolitan Kansas City. So this should be recorded and history shall properly recognize the contribution made by our bill, Senator Lauren Harper. And finally, uh, my colleague who enters say, with me, Senator Gregory Razor. Um, whereas Gregory Razor, uh, stood in his legislation that would have been harmful to metropolitan community college during our last legislative session. Whereas Senator Razor actively protected the will of voters. Who voted to join the community college district to make higher education more accessible and affordable for area students. Whereas Senator Razor is championing a number of policy issues of state legislature, including equal treatment for all Missourians under the law. Access to affordable healthcare, Medicaid expansion and funding for higher education. And whereas Senator Razor is a passionate leader for equality, a thoughtful and approachable legislator in his district and beyond. While also showing a willingness to work across the aisle on substantive issues. Now, therefore, being resolved that the board of trustees of the junior college district of the metropolitan Kansas City, Missouri. hereby commends Senator Gregory Razor for his five years of temporary service in Missouri's state legislature. Legislature, I don't know what it is. His tireless support of M C C and education and his principal leadership in the last Missouri legislative session. And being finally resolved that this commendation resolution shall be entered into the official minutes of the board of trustees of the junior college district of metropolitan Kansas City, Missouri. So that it should be recorded and his, in our history and should properly recognize the contribution made by Senator Gregory Razor. So we want to thank all of you for standing with us, uh, for providing the impact this year, uh, as a public community college. And in turn, we also want to be our, uh, community college system and for that, we would like to appreciate.
That's the fact that the college is our, uh, new college champion. I know that she was the engine behind, uh, a lot of this and, uh, we really appreciate your passion for your long, long years of experience. I appreciate it personally. It's just crazy.
Okay, three, two, one, smile. Three, two, one, smile.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Trustee, you guys may take a motion on the revote.
Well, I was watching a movie and then the actor falls.
I'll take a.
No, you said you were looking up the actors.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have. I'll take a formal motion to approve the commendations. Salute. Second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, much success.
You're right, let's just borrow.
Yes. And Barbara, we do really appreciate it.
I know you love.
You did a good job.
Okay, we'll go on then to item five point one, which is treasurer's report.
I'll invite, excuse me, uh, Dr. Fischel to the podium to do the overview from the regular session. I'm sorry, the work session before we take a vote.
And since the president's getting members of the board's question. Financials, we're M C C. You've been using, call your pensions, your bottom, right hand corner, thirteen percent. The calculated target is sixteen point seven percent. So it seems the, uh, well, well within its target. So this is again, hopefully, coming in common graphic for the board as well as the audience. It, uh, basically demonstrates the cycle. One, just quickly just point out is there's, you'll see this gray bars for last year. January, February is a split in revenue. Normally it's a very high revenue in January. And then last year, we had some, but we did catch up. Having to report that, uh, our revenues are at last year and our expenses are a little lower than last year. And so it was following very well.
I asked Dr. Fischel, uh, before we, if, if it's okay to include with the financial report. I asked him to provide an update on the bond dollars and the spending. Every month or early or more often, I get what we call a bond checkbook. So, uh, Dr. Fischel, could you walk through this just quickly, please?
Absolutely. So just before I go into this, it's just a reminder, it's on page nine of your monthly report. We give you a bond synopsis or a succinct synopsis of the bond spend. But this gives you a more thorough view of just how the bond is being expended. First premise is that, uh, at this point in time, we have expended forty eight point seven percent of the bond proceeds. Within our first year after we issued them. Reminder that, uh, we have to spend eighty five percent of them within three years. So we're, we're well on track. But what this does is, is you'll see in the first column is the ref number as a chance to allude to this is what we do is, is we generate a requisition to spend the dollars. And this gives you a breakdown of how each of those spent go. So, uh, the first one, uh, so if it doesn't have a number on it, you spent nine hundred forty three thousand dollars. Because that was the proceeds that we have utilized to actually issue the bond. And all the necessities to do that. And then the first one gives you the breakdown and shows you that the first major expense was one million in tech. And valid, and then second went down, you'll see it breaks down. Again, I won't go into all the details, but just use number two as an example. We spent one point seven million dollar in tech, one point one at the advanced field center. And far right, we do the total. So it gives you a breakdown of each draw that we are making on the bottom. Where those proceeds are going to which project and in the grand total.
And there's a bunch of data behind this, you know, even more so behind this.
Did you say forty eight percent?
Forty eight point seven percent.
That is the, uh, finance report and I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve the finance report as presented.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
The movement seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Right. Dr. Beatty will go to item five point two, the general fund levy.
Uh, so every year we have to bring forward the levy and this is going to be public hearing.
Hey, you might go over Dr. Beatty just real quickly, kind of procedure wise, how we, how we do this.
Um, so we'll have a moment here where we will take a vote, I'm sorry, to provide an opportunity for any comment in the public on item five point two. And then we'll move forward to item five point three, where the board could actually take a vote to accept the levy as presented.
And we will actually, um, quickly, I will actually adjourn this meeting. Or to, to, in order to do the, uh, general fund levy. Item five point three, or can we just do it in this session here?
We have done that.
But we can also just do it as item five point three.
We've done that. We did that last.
Okay, let's do it that way, if you're comfortable with that. Yes. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Dr. Beatty, on the, uh, the percentage, that percentage is, is, it hasn't increased or hasn't increased.
And Dr. Fischel for the levies.
Yeah, zero, zero, or point zero.
So you're talking, it's not a percentage, it's the actual, it's.
That is the actual, right?
Okay, so. And.
We, that's what I was searching.
The way, the way the calculation is done is, is, is we are allowed so much revenue recognized by the state to collect on our levy. What we then do is we get the information from the county. So I just go through this and I can then answer your question as we go through this. Sure. Okay, so, uh, what is the tax levy? I won't go into great details, but just for new board members and refresh memory of everyone. This is, uh, we have our levy to, uh, the constitution and the state statutes amended by the Hancock amendment, which sets parameters on how, where and how we can do things. Keeping in mind that this is all done by the state auditor. That all we do is collect the information from the counties, put it, hand it over to the state auditors. And the state auditor then gives us back our information. So, uh, our, our restriction for us is, is we're not allowed to go above point two, seven cents for, uh, one hundred value. So what the Hancock amendment allows us to do is, is when, when we look at our value, so it's a reverse calculation. What they basically do is says, is, uh, M C C, you're allowed to collect so much revenue. And then they look at this, is did the valuations go up or did the consumers pricing index go up? You are allowed to take a smaller of the two, no more than five percent. So in this particular year, the C P I was smaller than the valuation at one point four. And so that, that would be the calculated increase. So then what happens is, is, is once again, we take that total value. What we're allowed to have for revenue and then you crop or you do a reverse calculation to come up with the actual rate. Does that make sense?
So if I, in my brain, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm thinking there's a fraction and the denominator is lower than the, the numerator, so we can lower the percentage. And I don't know, that's how I see it in my brain.
And it does, I mean, as, as, you know, based on what's allowed and the valuations, the calculation comes out and generates the rate. Uh, but to even answer your question, is it higher or lower, this is, uh, I think President Skaggs asked for this several years back and we just maintain, bring it to you is, is this is, this kind of gives you a feel for what's the history of that rate? And what you'll see is, is, uh, we actually put the bars up there to show you the actual dollar values that we're getting and that calculated rate. And what, hopefully what you'll notice is, is the light blue is the actual revenue or the dark blue is the projection. You always kind of do a conservative projection and hopefully come in with more revenue, uh, you know, based on penalties and after the fact collections, et cetera. The reason FY twenty two is even higher is, is, uh, we are allowed, because of the attachments, that's go up and capture more revenue due from our taxing mega district because of the attachments. Uh, the way that works, just real quickly is, is we have to do the calculation based on the original in, in district. And then we calculate that rate and now we take that rate and we can now go forward and say all the new attachments, we give, this new rate applies to all of you. You do, you can't see that in this year twenty two, except for how much bars, you can see the bar has increased in there. I mean, it, it, it went from three point five or thirty five point eight million, thirty nine point six.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure. I appreciate it.
It did, it, it, I'm going to have to think about some of what you said, but it's a, a good background for how, how we're looking at that.
I mean, happy to go over, I mean, this is what the calculation sheet we get from the state auditor. I mean, you're right, we've got numerators, denominators, all that good stuff.
Yes, sir.
But we don't do it, the state does.
Very good. It's too bad we can't do it.
Thank you. All right, done. Thank you.
So where are the, where are the point of the hearing?
So then we are at item five point three, which is the general fund levy official.
Excuse me, trustee.
Yes.
Um, five point two.
I'm sorry, we need, we need to adopt it, I'm sorry.
Yep. With the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Five point three, I'm just bear with me, five point, five point three is what?
Five point three, let me make a motion on the number. Five point two is relevant.
I'm sorry, Dr. Yeah, I was getting my numbers backwards, I apologize. Uh, okay, so we are officially in the, um, public hearing portion now. Um, if anyone that's watching on the internet would like to make a comment on those tax rates. Please click on the raise the hand button on the bottom of your screen. We have an M C C staff member monitoring the webinar that will then unmute you and allow you to talk. So again, if you, um, would like to comment, just raise your hand, um, in the, in the webinar there. And we'll wait for a couple of minutes. If we don't have any responses, then we will move on. All right. All right, thank you. Um, then we will move on to, um, item five point three, which is the general fund levy vote.
Uh, obviously funds for the operation of the district are partially secured through the tax levy. And that property tax has been calculated in compliance with Article ten, section twenty two of the constitution. This is a third, uh, at least a third of our, uh, budget that comes through tax dollars and we recommend approval.
I'll take a motion. Sir, second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we're going to item five point four.
Item five point four is. Item five point four is for Dell computers. We intend to purchase seventeen hundred computers. We presented last month on this as part of our computer, uh, replacement plan. The first thirteen hundred and fifty computers, we will replace computers in our current inventory that are beyond their five year lifespan in terms of that replacement plan. Three hundred and fifty of those will be used for district wide student, the student loaner program. We're doing this because of the demand from our students. We currently have six hundred and fifty devices and an additional three hundred and fifty will bring that loaner program up to one thousand devices to support our students with the head. Obviously, our student headcount is in thousands. And I recommend.
Take a motion to approve item five point four. For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I have a question. So what do we do with the ones that have, um, beyond the five year expectancy?
Uh, Dr. Chan or Dr. Jackson, will you please respond to that?
So do you ask what we do with the ones that we are.
With the used ones?
So, uh, we do have, uh, a recycling program that, uh, takes the computers and, you know, I think he was certificate once we have, uh, once we handle the prices.
So we give them back to Dell?
Uh, no, no, it's not Dell, it's a, it's a, it's an organization that publishes and, you know, and people keep them out. Some of them are, uh, you know, they publish it, they assist us.
So when we refurbish them, then what do we do with them?
You want?
When, when they're refurbished, so you turn them over to the organization to be refurbished. You said something about a certificate. Do we get those refurbished computers back or do they?
No, they don't, you know, you know, we didn't allow, sorry, please, all that.
So can those be computers that our students maybe can have?
It's a completed process once we hand them, or at least he decided he was designing companies, you know, uh, with this, this, and you guys, you, with this waste.
But I, I think the trustee brings forward a good recommendation that we can investigate. If we possibly, uh, offer them to our students to, um, be there for a discounted price or just for them to have. Just for them to have. Yeah, we'll look into that trustee and report back to you what our findings are and how we might be able to make something like that happen. That's a really good suggestion. And do we know how many we're talking about? That we refurbished? Uh huh. We'll come back and give you a report on how many we refurbished annually. Thank you. You're welcome.
One additional question, which is to chair. Uh, I suspect we have, you know, computers on all campuses and so this isn't like we have Microsoft and, uh, and, uh.
Apple.
Apple. So we, we, we had just Dell, right?
Right, we had, we standardized to Dell.
And then, uh, you know, I guess the other question is, I, I noticed the bid was issued and Dell was the only one that responded, is that potentially?
Well, we notified a hundred and fifteen and thirty six firms actually accessed the solution, solicitation. It could be that that was the only firm that responded because that was the only firm that felt that they could beat the spec specs of the R P.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion and second, is there any other discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, we go on to item five points. Five.
Uh, we are moving forward as you saw in the presentation with the Longview Automotive Institute. Uh, currently we have automotive maintenance and we're expanding to auto body and diesel. Uh, and so for that, as a part of that design process that was approved previously for the architects to do that work, we have now identified the need for a paint booth, double prep booth, paint mixing room and associated equipment needed to bid ahead of the final design in order to ensure final, uh, building design is correctly accounted for. Uh, and I recommend, uh.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Movement second is discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, item five point six.
Our being backup from recovery renewal were coming to you, uh, requesting renewal. This is a backup system that allows us to recover information lost in the case of an attack. The data recovery point could be a day or a week before the attack, but it depends on the configuration. So this is additional protection. I think there was a question earlier, uh, when we were doing the ERP. This is one of those tools that we've used to protect our system and recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve item five point six. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One quick question.
Please, um.
Um, Chancellor, I, I'm sorry. I had previously asked a question and I gather that, uh, this protection will serve only some of the systems. Uh, not a, a done or, or a sweep of all of our black phones. There's only the same certain functions. Am I right about that?
So our data for the most case is, are, for the most part is stored in the cloud. And, uh, so only the data that keeps our critical systems running is what we would use this, uh, stuff. We would use this for to protect our systems, those critical systems that are running.
Is this the core system?
Yes. Thank you.
Questions? Um, okay, uh, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, item five point seven.
Five point seven is for, uh, business developer services. We have individuals, uh, independent contractors that work on us on a strict commission basis to provide, to essentially recruit businesses for us to partner with where we provide training. Uh, this would be in up to, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, this is a commission type of relationship. You bring in the business, you get paid. If you don't bring in businesses, you don't get paid.
Take a motion to approve.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Movement second, any discussion? On favor, Mike?
Just a quick question, um, they're gonna go out and, um, help me, they're gonna go out and give business for the college.
Yeah, so we have a arm of the college, just a revenue generating arm, it's called, uh, our workforce and economic development arm of the college. And so we do a lot of corporate training. So the, the training that we do for Honeywell, for example, where they, uh, or any other new businesses that wanna come and they need leadership training, they need workforce training. So we seek out those businesses and we get contracts with them to do their training.
Very good.
And so this business developer develops that business for us on a commission basis.
That's a good thing. And, and who do we do and, uh, if we don't, we don't have one right now, how have we been with this?
We do have one right now, this is, and, and, and this is, uh, an ongoing process where we do a sweep for, uh, not sweep, a call for business developers to come and join, uh, partner with us to develop business relationships and get contracts, help us to get those contracts.
Very good. Thanks, Dr. Beatty. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have one question.
Please.
Uh, Chancellor, my correct, you was assuming that, uh, whatever profit we gain out of this contributes to support general fund.
Yes. It's a revenue generating off.
Right, any other questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Passes, item five point one one, surplus items.
Uh, surplus, so we have a policy in place right now that requires a not to exceed limit of six thousand dollars if we're in a surplus items. We're asking for an exception to the policy for the period of time through now through April twenty second. With us moving, uh, the programs, there's a lot of equipment that we will be surplusing. And we will still go through the process of gov.deals. Uh, I think that's what this, yeah, govdeals.com, um, to surplus. But if we have to wait to come to the board to get approval to surplus an item, it'll slow down the operations of us getting out of the space, given the new arrangement that we have in our purchase selling agreement to get out of the business and technology campus. So we're asking for an exception to that policy. We will come back after we have done all of our, uh, surplus out of the buildings. We will come back and show the, uh, surplus, uh, levels of surplus for all of the locations and equipment that we have had to surplus.
Any discussion and questions?
Need a motion.
I need a motion. I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Movement second, discussion.
So Dr. Beatty is, um, say if somebody we find at schools by all of our items at the same time, are, are we putting a limit on the number? Are we putting a limit on ourselves? Are you gonna have the authority to just kind of do the, if you're doing multiplicity of things?
Um.
If, I see the six thousand dollars, that's what I was saying, could not, to exceed six thousand dollars is where I'm.
So the policy, current, the current policy, if we are going to surplus anything, our current policy says that we cannot, uh, surplus anything that's over six thousand dollars without it coming to the board. And we are likely going to have a number of items, given the type of equipment that's at the business and technology campus that will be above six thousand dollars. So our ask is to get an exemption to come to ask to get rid of it and that we go ahead and surplus it and then come back with the total of all the items that we have surplus as a result.
Every given item.
And so we have to go through a bidding site and that might go, you know, we have no idea of how high that bidding is going to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions on item five point one one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, item five point one two.
Uh, item five one point one two is, uh, this is actually a slip sheet. We can get an opportunity to go through slip sheet items. Our online tutoring system for, uh, virtual tutoring. That contract is, uh, has, is expiring and we want to continue. Uh, this is one of the good things out of the, I mean, we were already doing some online tutoring, but obviously we had to bolster that during COVID. And this is one of the things that we are, uh, maintaining and adding to, uh, in terms of capacity.
Um, Dr. Beatty, I don't see a hard copy, I saw.
I, I apologize, I just noticed that in my book as well. This was a very late add and I apologize if it's not, if it's, there's not a hard copy in your book.
It should, is it on, it is on.
It is, it is on the system, yeah, I actually don't have it.
Can we open this in this chapter?
If you, if it, uh, if I may, um, trustee, if I would, uh, I'd like to suggest that we get this printed for you while I do the chancellor's report. So that you can have a hard copy in your hand. Thank you. Item five point twelve.
Uh, okay, so, so you'll go ahead and have that printed right now then?
Yes, we'll go ahead and give that printed right now.
Then let's go to.
Do we acquire now or do we wait?
We'll wait, we'll wait. I will go to item six point one one, which is lease amendment of Guadalupe Center, Dr. Beatty?
Uh, we have a, uh, leasing relationship with the Guadalupe Center. They have asked us to, so when we brought the lease to you, we had an increase of incremental uh, increases of the lease from, uh, year to year. Uh, and in meeting with the CEO, their registrations, uh, registrants are not up to what they should be and could be. And they're asking us to keep the rate, uh, at the first year base rate and then increase it. Uh, we have such a good relationship with the Guadalupe Center. We're actually, we need to approve this contract, but what we'd actually will be considering is reducing the rate even further for them since we'll be able to, uh, likely recoup those dollars from the COVID dollars that we received. But the board, we are asking for, to approve the contract that's in front of you, the lease that's in front of you, and then we'll be making some adjustments, uh, probably even deeper adjustments to their rate uh, since, you know, in the spirit of partnership and the kind of work that they do.
Dr. Beatty on, oh, I'm sorry, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Beatty, regarding that, um, if you do make adjustments, right now it's just a hard, um, eighty two thousand dollars for, um, uh, through, through twenty twenty two. Um, I, should we just insert there up to eighty two thousand, so?
No.
The bar?
My, my question is, uh, were they not able to get any of the care funding or whatever? I'm not trying to be hard on Guadalupe or anything of that nature. But, uh, they are part of a larger organization, um, that also has, um, other, uh, other, other locations. So are we the only one that is going to make this sacrifice for them? Or do they have other leasing options that they are also doing this? Because this is, you know, uh, twenty seven thousand dollars for us for two years. So I don't, I, I don't mind helping them, they are very hard, I want to keep that. But I, I think that we also have to keep to what our bottom line is and are we the only ones that's making this sacrifice?
As far as I know, we're the, I, I don't know the business that will know if they, any other locations, if there are leases, right? I just know the conversations that I've had, so I, I can't answer that.
And then, um, I guess, you know, with respect to, you know, getting the funding or whatever, were they not eligible to get some funding that would, uh, help them make up their difference in, in, in income loss?
Again, I, I, I can't answer that, but what I can say.
This is their number proposed, correct? This is the number they proposed?
No, no, okay, so this is, the, the lease that's before you is, um, the, the lease that we have agreed to. But I met with the CEO and the request, they indicated that there, there were challenges in meeting the incremental increase in this year, given their enrollment being as low as they are. I didn't, I don't, uh, I don't know, you know, the specifics of their business as, uh, as you stated. So right now, we're just, the, the way this is stated, it's keeping their, um, rate flat and not decreasing it, which you're approving. But what I was suggesting, and we don't necessarily have to do it, but what I was suggesting is that through our, you know, given our partnership and that we would be able to retail, recoup that money back to COVID dollars, that we could do deeper discount, uh, a deeper, uh, reduction if, you know, in the spirit of partnership. But, you know, we can, we can continue to talk about that.
Uh, on here is also this, so is the current lease for twenty twenty one, the eighty two thousand one hundred?
Correct.
Okay, and then so what would we do? We just keep that at the same rate for next year?
Correct.
And then we would go back to the regular amount for, for the increased lease agreement in twenty twenty three.
Correct.
So.
Um, I'm sorry to ask this, this, but could you, um, or someone say anything about the nature of the relationship between Guadalupe and Francis?
Sure, Dr. Beatty, would you mind stepping to the phone?
Did you hear the question? Pretty neat, trustee. Currently, we, we don't have a relationship with them in terms of the direction. Historically, there was conversations about us working with them, over their childcare, trying to their childcare providers. We have not been able to circle back to rebuild that relationship with them. Uh, we're in the process of rebuilding it.
Rebuilding the Francis, is that what you just?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty.
So at this point, we'll just leave it the way it is. Is there any, any other questions? So at this point, we'll just leave it the way it is. Is there any other, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes. All right. Um, do we have item 5.1? Two, there it is, right there.
If we could go to the chancellor's.
Okay. The only thing keeping us from leaving.
We sure want to hear this, too. Better be chanced.
Yeah, I think I'm bringing up the wrong version. The chancellor's report. All right. We have the adult, uh, at Longview, we opened the Adult Learner Lounge. We had the ribbon cutting and, uh, we had trustee Reed and trustee Mark Maitin that. This was actually one of our innovation projects a couple of years ago that was funded and brought to fruition. So it's a nice cozy place for our adult students so they can feel, so they're among their peers. We also participate in the Urban Youth Academy Queens of Diamond, uh, event. And, uh, Miss Gatchess, they took us, we got second place again. Uh, but we had a good team. What, we, we were second place last year. Uh, we're gonna win it next year. Our executive cabinet, we had our retreat. And, uh, we did a lot of strategic planning. And, uh, it was at the zoo. So we were like crazy animals at the zoo. Had a wonderful event at Pitt Valley, Jazz in the Valley. We, uh, this gentleman Shayless or Shayless O'Neil was a student and he really did a great job on that horn. Um, but we had also some local musicians. We had, uh, Frank White came and did, uh, Jazz in the Valley gave us a proclamation for Jazz in the Valley Day for, uh, the day this event was held. So it was a very nice event. The governor sent a proclamation, uh, and the mayor also sent the proclamation. So it was very well done. Good job, uh, Dr. Lee coordinating that event. And this is the, this was the inaugural year. This is gonna be an annual fundraiser. It'll turn into one of the fundraising events moving forward. We also did some fundraising at the K. Uh, we had some of our donors and our foundation board and campaign cabinet doing a thank you to them for the hard work that they're doing and raising the funds. Uh, so that was a great event as well. Now, since we're at the Maple Woods campus, oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, I also want to highlight, we have this thing called a budget calendar. Some of us look at it and go, "Ugh", but it actually is an award-winning budget calendar. The, uh, CACUBO, which is the Central Association for, uh, College and University Business Officers, won first place and that adds a great acknowledgement to stand and come forward if we can get a quick picture for her creation and hard work with the budget calendar that is now a more.
Well, congratulations, Dr. Beatty. That's great.
As the hard work of the, uh, team. Okay, uh, as you all know, usually when we come to another campus, we give that campus an opportunity to showcase something and so I'm gonna invite Dr. Redon to the podium because they're gonna showcase their co-curricular partnerships.
Good evening, President Skaggs, and President Stensfield. Want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share some details about our co-curricular partnership that has been very positive for the students who actually participate in that overall program. With me on this evening, I've got Jessica Hopper, who's a 21-year teaching veteran here at Maple Woods. And I also have Caitlin Kelly, who's our coordinator for a student life and leadership on campus. Together, we can tell you a little bit more about it. So, good luck.
Good evening, President Skaggs. Your trustees. Thank you for, for, for sending us here. It's a pleasure to be here.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Kelly. Thank you again, President Skaggs, for coming to us today for this opportunity for us to speak on our co-curricular partnerships and our growing student mix. Also, I want to just, we're just very excited. So, Fred, for us today, um, I teach, um, the faculty, I teach sociology and so here at Maplewood, we have a panel. So I want to start by talking about the origins of the students' success workshop that began in the fall of 2015, the initiative of, 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 so, especially yearly theme of serving our first generation students. Uh, we'll take them in our first person, so it's one of your guys. As part of the programing, I was tasked with creating and presenting this first workshop, which was titled, "Preparing for Final Exams". So that was the first, the first workshop. Um, early sessions are pretty small, so we usually get maybe 10 students, sometimes even 10 students. So they're pretty small, to be fair. In the fall of 2019, we added a course evaluation to better understand how the students were receiving and what they were learning from the workshops. Students were asked to self-report on a scale of one to five their knowledge prior to and after attending the workshop. We found that students self-reported an increased understanding related to how to navigate and prepare for final exams as well as finishing their semester strong.
Great.
In the spring of 2020, we added a midterm session, so preparing for midterms. Um, we also evaluated the battle shop. And we found for battle shop, that students also self-reported a greater understanding about preparing for their midterms and had a plan for the rest of the semester. Um, people asked why I continued off of the workshop when they were fairly small, maybe 10 students or less. And I always tell people, um, even with low attendance, we could tell that we were reaching the students that were showing up. And of course, this is part of our mission here at MCC, right, of serving students. So when that, the why, well, that's why I continued to do it, as, you know, solo on my own. But what I lacked was organizational support because it was just me during the sessions. Um, I needed help promoting the events, uh, packing the evaluations, uh, you know, knowing who was there and continuing to run the evaluations as well as just data. And that's our Caitlin Kelly and Caitlin. So like Jessica had mentioned, as this initiative grew, so did our partnership and it developed. So Campus Life and Leadership oversees clubs, organizations, services, and leadership. We created an intentional partnership between student services and instruction to create this co-curricular activity. One of the desired outcomes from this experience could be that intentional connection to campus inside and outside the classroom. This reflects the mission of student success, but overall, our purpose to contribute to the academic persistence and retention of our students. Campus Life and Leadership co-sponsored the event by providing logistical support, NAC, because students love NAC and recruiting. The workshop series continued to grow and last year we included an additional session in the evening. Our programming with virtual is both an intentional effort to keep students connected to campus during the very height of the pandemic and to provide a academic support around finals and beyond. So these sessions were so well-attended, we added a starting strong session in the beginning to develop good skills to understand the connection to campus resources. We continue to evaluate these activities and have more detailed data available. So we want to know how we're doing and how the program is moving forward. And so we looked at, we wanted to look at workshop attendance, so who's attending the workshop or how many people are attending the workshop, as well as retention. So are those students that are attending, um, are they doing better? Are we retaining those students? And so one of the trends that you'll notice is that with each semester, 12/20, 3/1, um, we were seeing more students attend the workshop. So the, the attendance was growing. And we also see that the retention rate was growing as well. So that's, that's what we want to be. Um, one of the things that we want to make sure to know is that we can continue to grow the program and the retention rates. Um, and also that the retention rates for this program is well above the retention rate for making lives, which currently sits at 45% as of 2021. We have a couple of goals as we move forward. Um, our first operational goal is we want to continue to increase attendance. We want to reach more, more and more students. Um, some of the tactics that we, that we plan to use to get attendance up is, um, outreach to the learning centers and the tutors because those are people that can refer more students to us. Um, and also outreach to the division chairs and, and other faculty members to try to teach you that people to send their students to us. Uh, our performance measures, so how we know how we're doing is attendance tracking. So having that, Campus Life and Leadership Hallboard or Cathy Who's Coming is helpful. And then retargeting for 12/21 for this semester, 120 students, and then for next semester, we're targeting for 100,000 students. And then our second goal is to increase retention. So we'll do this by evaluation and making the change based upon that student feedback. It's so important in the success of the program. And we'll measure retention rates and then our targeting success improvement. So in closing, we're really thankful for this opportunity and look forward to continuing to test our students.
Question, Joe, please?
Oh, how can I help? Okay, so how many seat hours is a student spending in one of the sessions?
Um, so it just depends on how many of the sessions they come to. Each session runs an hour. So a student who would come to the starting strong and spend an hour, the midterms, that's an hour, and then the final question, an hour. So if something's all, you do all three theoretically, they can spend three hours. And more, you have, you know, be kind of that high chain student.
And are you gonna multiply yourself in these times? Are you still doing this stuff?
Well, you know, the cool thing is that during the pandemic, um, the use of those virtual sessions, you re-grouped the program. And then we added a night session because I noted that, you know, sometimes we, I had students saying, "I want to come, but work doesn't today or that time doesn't work." So we added that second session. So now we're running, you know, two, two weeks after class starts. And then we run two, about two weeks before midterms. And then we run two, about two weeks before finals because we're telling them, "We want to prepare about two weeks". And so we run, and then end.
You're still teaching Apollo?
Say that again.
You're still teaching Apollo?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah. It's something, it's something that I was passionate about. So it's, it's about what I'm doing, right? That's really, really valuable.
Retention numbers are impressive.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for hosting us.
And last, but absolutely not least, we get our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty.
And I'm sorry, this is Mr. Keith Castor because I believe this is his first time.
It's, uh, I presented on the Stokes Program at Longview, uh, when we first started.
But in this capacity.
Yeah, in this capacity, he's a district-wide leader, staff council leader. And he works at the Long, he's at the Longview Campus and the disability services. There you go. Did that off the hip.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beatty, President Skaggs, and the members of the board of trustees. Um, at this time, the staff's engaged in the hard work of transitioning from a virtual setting back to an on-campus environment. Uh, many of our students and longer staff have not been in an in-person setting for over a year and a half. While we're very proud of the way we were able to pivot to a virtual world, we find that there's just as steep a learning curve as we transition back to an in-person environment. Uh, the staff as well as our students are up to this challenge, but it does not come without its own unique set of problems. And we appreciate your support as we all work through this together. We're looking forward to the district in-service in October and we remain cautiously optimistic. On one hand, we are very excited to see our colleagues that we have not seen face-to-face in a long, long time. On the other hand, we fully understand of why we haven't been able to engage with them for a long, long time. We are looking forward to that. We know the pandemic will not replace many challenges in the coming academic year. And the DSC is committed to working with our college students, administrators, and expect to produce another successful year. At the words of your predecessor, I am amazed and would like to say again how hard the staff of NCC work on a daily basis to serve our students and our campus community and how flexible they have been in this challenging time. As always the case, if you have any questions, um, please let me know. If you'd like to attend a DSC meeting, please let me know. We would be happy to have you and we are happy to have you. Thank you.
Thanks. That ends my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Uh, we'll go back then to item 5.12, which is online tutoring service. Dr. Beatty, we have it here in front of us. Could you just repeat what you said a little bit earlier on that item?
So the online tutoring is tutoring that we had offered, but it obviously has, uh, an increased need given our virtual environment. And as I was mentioning earlier, this is one of the aspects of, uh, uh, the outcomes of the pandemic that we will likely keep, uh, because it's a, uh, it's a service that helps the students on demand when they need it, uh, because it's a 24/7 tutoring portal. It's a three-year contract not to exceed $234,000, $78,000 annually.
Take a motion to approve?
Come on.
Sir, second?
Thank you.
Discussion?
Uh, Dr. Beatty, uh, you know, is this something that, uh, they'll go to the website and kind of work out with a responding person on the other end?
That's what I believe, it's how I believe it happens. Sue, is there anything you could add to that?
Yeah, it has both, um, students who have liked either virtual as well as just the chat.
And then is it kind of on after hours, uh, or always work?
It's 24/7.
24/7. So if they're struggling with algebra or their math or whatever, they can get in there and work out on a particular problem and have someone kind of coming back with, uh, kind of following through on, on how to solve those problems.
Yes.
That's an awesome one. That's terrific. Now, what about like civilians? Can we get in there and do our time?
Students enroll in a class.
So you gotta be a student and then so whatever that means, you gotta have a student number and a login. It's all.
Get enrolled.
I gotta get enrolled in order to get on there to ask questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
One more question. Did we get new books? Uh, because things seem to be fitting so much better this.
That's because there's less items.
All in my favor, item 5.12, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes. We'll, um.
Before you adjourn the meeting, I just want to take a quick second to thank, uh, the staff that make this virtual hybrid, uh, thing possible. Uh, Nubia, the IT team, uh, and our staff and the chancellor's office. Takes a lot of coordination to make sure this happens. Have a couple of little hiccups every now and then, but it's, it's hard work. So I want to personally thank all of you.
We'll take a motion to return. Second. All right, we're turned.